I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, to beautiful communities united by a righteous scale for equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Here.
Shippers?
Here.
Spelman?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
And at this time, if we could have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Sandy, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come up, if you would please state your name and your address, and also write it on the paper there for Sandy, it's very helpful, and if you could limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Richie Harris, I live at 124 and 1/2 Air Street, and I just want to thank you, Mayor, for coming down to the Legion last Wednesday night to do our poppy kickoff on behalf of the Women's Auxiliary. When I left, they were just finishing counting up, so I don't know what the total is, but it looked like we had a pretty good year, or they did. And the other thing is to invite council to be a part, if you wish to come and walk, or maybe riding one of the fire trucks or something, for the Memorial Day Parade, which is next Monday. So...
Thank you.
My name is Dave Reiser, I live at 1300 Sunset Lane in Cadillac, and I'm here to talk about one of the things that's on your agenda tonight, I believe, the budget, not specifically, but in a very general way. A couple weeks ago, the voters of the State of Michigan turned down a proposal to improve public transportation by a 4 to 1 majority. And we could all debate the reasons that was torn down, but I think we all agree on the fact, we cannot count on Lansing for help with our streets. We have to do that on our own, and as it should be, we should solve our own problems. So I'm making a proposal to you to consider using some of the millage that you could levy to fund streets. We have a tax base this year of about $265 million. Under the charter, we're allowed to levy 15 mils, but there's a constitutional limitation on that millage that we have to not levy without a vote of the people of the city of Cadillac. So I'm suggesting that the city council consider asking the voters to override this mandatory constitutional rollback, and not necessarily, we could levy up to a mil with the vote of the people, but I'm not even asking for the whole mil. Even a half a mil would raise approximately $100,000 a year to support our streets. Now, we're having an election in November, and that would be an appropriate time to put this issue on the ballot, to ask the people of the city of Cadillac, do we want to fix our own problems or our own streets? And I think this is a good opportunity for you to consider that, spend the summer discussing it, make some good plans of what you would do with the money, so you can tell the city, yes, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and $100,000 saved for three or four years would do a great deal toward improving our streets. And I thank you for your attention.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the consent agenda. This evening, we have a copy of our minutes from the regular meeting that was held on April 20th, along with the work session that was held on April 20th. And could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And at this time, we have a proclamation. And I think that there's some people here that would like to come forward for the reading of the proclamation. You can come right up front here if you want to. How are you?
Good.
Good. Oh, my goodness. Can you stand right up front and turn around and look at your parents? There we go. Okay, this proclamation this evening is to proclaim May as Food Allergy Awareness Month. Whereas many, 15 million Americans have food allergies, nearly 6 million are children under the age of 18, whereas research shows that the prevalence of food allergy is increasing among children, and whereas eight foods cause 90% of all food allergy reactions in the U.S., shellfish, fish, milk, eggs, tree, tree nuts, peanuts, soy and wheat. And whereas symptoms of a food allergic reaction can include hives, vomiting, diarrhea, respiratory distress, and swelling of the throat. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, food allergy results in more than 300,000 ambulatory care visits a year involving children under 18. And whereas there is no cure for food allergies, and scientists do not understand why, strict avoidance of the offending food is the only way to prevent an allergic reaction. And whereas anaphylactic is a serious allergic reaction that is rapid in onset and may cause death. And whereas food allergy research and education, also known as FAIR, is a national nonprofit organization dedicated to improving the quality life, quality of life, and the health of individuals with food allergies, and to provide them hope through the promise of new treatments. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Carla J. Philkins, Mayor of the City of Cadillac, Michigan, do hereby proclaim May as Food Allergy Awareness Month in the city of Cadillac.
They did?
Okay, the next thing we have is a community spotlight, spotlight, Marcus.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, Mr. Pella, the supervisor of the Mitchell State Park, was going to come and present some information on the Partnership and Conservation Award that the city recently received. Unfortunately, Mr. Pella was taken away this afternoon and was not able to attend. However, I do have just a brief update, if you will, on the awards and the awards themselves that I brought to show, to show everybody. Josh Pella, again, the supervisor of the Mitchell State Park, nominated the city for this collaboration award. This is an internal recognition that the Michigan Department of Natural Resources has, and their commission accepted the nomination that he put forward, and the city was then subsequently awarded the Partners in Conservation Award. Specifically mentioned in the nomination that Mr. Pella put forward was recognition for the many years of collaboration for the maintenance of the White Pine Trail that comes through Cadillac. Additionally, it was mentioned at the meeting that the commission had, the Natural Resources Commission had, also of our collaboration more recently with the Bike Cadillac program, and also with the extension of the Kenwood Park Trail system. There were a lot of very pleasant things that were said. This plaque was presented, I'm going to just quickly read the bottom part of the plaque, where it says, "The Department of Natural Resources and the Natural Resources Commission offer sincere gratitude to the city of Cadillac for your extraordinary commitment to the preservation, protection, and addition to the natural resources in and around the city of Cadillac. Your efforts have closely aligned with the department's mission to conserve and protect our state's natural resources. Your passion, professionalism, and perseverance have been instrumental in leaving a legacy for many generations to come." There was also a surprise special tribute that Representative Phil Potvin presented at the meeting as well. This special tribute is also in recognition of the collaboration that's taken place, and in recognition of the award that the city received. It's signed by both Representative Potvin, Senator Brewer, and by the governor. So these are two really wonderful things, wanted to share with the city council, and we'll certainly find a special place to display the public.
That's wonderful. Thank you to all of the employees of the city that have worked so closely with these folks in making something like this happen, something to be really proud of. Okay, next on our agenda, we have a couple of public hearings, the first of which is a public hearing to consider the approval of the 2015 to 2020 City CAPS Community Recreation Plan.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Michael Coy is going to give the update to the council this evening on the plan. This is the final draft of the plan that the city and CAPS have previously put together, where now, excuse me, previously have shared. We're now at the point where this would be an opportunity for Mike to share some slides on the plan, talk a little bit about the process that we went through, and then seek any public input. Mike, do you need a clicker?
Sure. I'm going to show pictures. I'm going to attempt to keep this brief, but what I'm going to basically talk about are the eight steps that are required for the plan to be approved by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources. If any of you have your plan here, it's also shown on page 24. For those that don't know, very quickly, we made a major change in how the plan was laid out, we added photographs and so forth in it that were not in it previously, and Jerry Adams, Cindy, and myself really were the ones that put all this together. Basically, the plan, the first step that I'm going to describe is the longer, but prior to the advisory board meeting, which is required, we did interviews, I did interviews with probably 15 different people with different organizations in town, to get their ideas for things that maybe should be included, that were not included in the past. They were pretty in-depth interviews, some of the more interesting people were Dave Foley, great ideas on snowshoe trails, Camp Tarenta, for example, the YMCA six years ago was not here, so Dan Smith with the YMCA had some good ideas. So we brought in some people, and their ideas are shown in this. After this, the Recreation Advisory Board, they met at the end of January, there were five of us as all there. The board is going to be reduced from nine members to seven. Three of the organizations that were involved when the rec plan was first done in 2002 no longer exist. So we're basically now going to, we would like to add the YMCA to it, and CAPS, we all thought that with their presence in the community, they would be a good new member on the advisory board. This advisory board did make some additions, had some great ideas, the input was there. After they did their thing, we did the updates, then we got the plan available to the public. That was early in February. We, eventually, we got the plan, you folks have had it for about a month and a half. It's been available to the public. It's been out there, it's been available.
Is it on our website?
Yes, yes. And along with that, the group wants to make it a point, in the past, it's been a little lackadaisical and not meeting once, even once a year, so we're going to make sure that happens in the future, it just should. Dave Champion is who the person with CAPS that I worked with on the advisory board. And so after their suggestions and everything, that's basically where the draft came from. The draft was finished after we talked to them. The second step in the process is, well, basically, we did make it available for the public, and that was an important part, so we did that. The third step was the Planning Commission, they basically had a public hearing like this at their February meeting, and at their February meeting, after all of that, they did recommend that it be adopted and be forwarded to you folks. So that, and that was the third step. Basically, the next step is CAPS, Dave Champion and Frank Verhoeven, they're going to be actually taking it to the CAPS board at their June 8th meeting, they were hoping to have it earlier, but they just weren't able to with all the things going on with them at this time. So they planned to review it, and I assume adopt it as is at their June, at their June 8th meeting. Basically, we are now, well, step five has to do with more public comment, you know, it's required that the public be made aware, so that is one of the required steps, and we've been doing that for months, so that's, that's not a big deal there. Basically, we are now at step six of the eight, and that is city council, for city council to have a public hearing on it, and if they like it, adopt it, and we then proceed to the next, the last two steps. Basically, step seven is the step where we submit it to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, because ultimately, they have to approve it. So basically, CAPS, you folks will approve it, and essentially, that's what, what is the next step is for the DNR, after both bodies have approved it, then it will go to them. One interesting thing that has changed over the last few years, I know Jerry has mentioned it before, I was actually at meetings a week and a half ago, the three major grant funding sources with the DNR right now, all of them now require communities to have a approved five-year rec plan, or basically, your grant application, you, you're not going to be accepted, and you're not going to get anything. So the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, they have now made this a requirement. And the last step in the whole process is basically, once it's all approved, then we in turn get the plan, basically, we get it to various agencies, Wexford County will get a copy of this, along with this, you're going to have the library, the city clerk, CAPS will have it at their library, it'll be on our website, so at that point, you know, that's really the completion, we're pretty much right to the end of it, because essentially, when you folks adopt it, and CAPS adopts it, it then goes to the DNR, and if they make any recommendations or changes, which Jerry would know more, I don't know if they will, because we've submitted rec plans in the past, so we, we pretty much know, you know, what they're, what they're looking for, what they're anticipating. That's pretty much it. I'm just showing pictures.
We like pictures.
They're nice.
There you are.
I love that one.
Do any of you have questions for myself?
I'd comment, I guess, to the council and to staff, I did ask Mike about one particular item that I felt like I wanted in the plan, and it wasn't there, and he assured me that it's easy to make revisions to the plan, and what I'm referring to is the new piece of property that the city has taken on, next to the Clam River, just north of Haynes Street, and that, you know, I'd like to see it in a plan, or a plan developed regarding that, so that we can make a little park, or a parking lot with access to the Clam River Greenway or something. That would be my only suggestion, and I just wanted to put it out there.
I think that would be a good addition, considering it's a five-year plan, I hope that we can do something with that.
What I would like to do is, I, I agree, we can do it, the fact that the advisory board is going to meet again, I myself would like to see, for example, if we update it in a year, because I don't know if we have a plan yet, is let's just do an addendum to the section of the plan that pertains to future projects with that. I mean, I don't know, you know, as far as in our immediate plans, do we now have the property? Do we have the property now? So...
Have the property.
My opinion...
If it was part of the plan, it would be easy to be able to refer to the plan when we're looking for funding opportunities, or if somebody comes knocking at our door saying, "Do you guys have a project that we can work on?", we would, that might be an option, so...
Well, I have a quick question for Jerry. Jerry?
Yeah, we can simply, we can add it to the plan right now.
Yeah, it doesn't have to go back to the plan.
Part of the role of the public hearing is to find out if there are any additional comments, desires, and so forth, and so, yeah, it would be an easy task. We might not have a great deal of detail as to what's going to happen to the property, but it can indicate that it's now in public ownership, our goal is to kind of incorporate it into the Clam River Greenway in some fashion, and we can leave it at that.
Yeah, just to put it on our radar.
Easy to do.
I'll include it, and I'll get it, that particular page to CAPS immediately, so they can include it with the one that they go before their board on June 8th. I'll get that immediately.
I think that by adding it and not putting it as an addendum, it emphasizes our commitment to getting it taken care of.
That'll be added immediately.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time then, I think we need to open the floor for any public comment in regards to this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it to council discussion.
You know, if you look over at least our last two recreation plans, we don't realize the grant dollars that come in because of those projects, and it being a requirement to get grants from the MDNR, so this is a great project, and thanks to the staff, because the process was really good this year, and the input that you got was excellent. The only thing I wanted to make sure, so if we, we approve this, we're going to approve this with the addition of the project that Councilmember Spelman added. I'll make a motion that we approve the 2015 through 2020 Community Recreation Plan with the addition of the project that is stated by Councilmember Spelman.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spelman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then the second public hearing that we have this evening is to consider the approval of resolution to adopt ordinance number 2015-08. It's an ordinance establishing General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2016.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Finance Director Owen Roberts will briefly explain the process that we've gone through this evening, and then it would be appropriate to open up the floor to any questions from the public.
All right, thank you. Just briefly, this process tonight is, is not the, the main public hearing as required by charter, we talked about that a little bit last time when we set the public hearing, where there is the one that we did on April 20, required to be in April, that is the one that, that is already done. This public hearing tonight is to, to adopt the ordinance for the budget, so that's why we're doing this again here tonight. Again, the budget was distributed on April 1st, we've held two work sessions on April 6th and April 20th, and then did conduct that public hearing on April 20th. So we're all set, except for the, this public hearing and the adoption process, that's required to be after the 15th and before the end of the month of May, per our charter requirements. So we're meeting that by being here tonight. This is a budget that looks exactly like what was presented at both of the work sessions and at the public hearing on April 20th. It's a budget built on an increase in our taxable value of 0.26%, which is just barely above flat. The general fund, just to reiterate, is proposing a use of $99,000 in reserves to balance the budget. That could be reduced to zero by eliminating four capital projects, so there is some, some safety in that, and that really would be all the comments that I would have on, on this process tonight, unless there's any questions.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for public comments as they relate to this agenda item.
I would be opposed to taking any money out of reserves to make your budget. We need to make cuts. We're spending, spending more money, and spending money foolishly that we don't have. The voters, the taxpayers are running out of money. You see a lot of closed businesses, a lot of vacant homes in town. Tonight, in closed session, you'll be discussing the $50,000 that you owe Herring Township for legal fees on the Borsma property. To date, the city of Cadillac has spent about $250,000 on private property in Herring Township. I noticed the last couple of meetings where you discuss shifting funds around for legal expenses into the city's utility fund. That means that the users of the water and sewer system are, are being charged, in a long way around, to pay legal fees for things that really don't pertain to the service that they're receiving. So I would ask that you suspend any ideas of taking more money out of reserves, no more pet projects, and make all the cuts that you have to make, so that we can go forward. We're certainly opposed to any new taxes, that's got to stop somewhere. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open for council discussion.
We're discussing first, just a simple statement, and I know that this year with our, we did have two work sessions, I was not at the first one, but I know we didn't get, like in the past where we've had an opportunity to really review the aspects of the budget, but it's been a few-year discussion point that I've addressed the concern on legal, the legal fees aspect. It's been very clear, we all, we all understand, we've had it from all aspects, on any, any lawsuit, we're getting it, no matter what side we might think a person's on, they've, they've brought up some very legitimate questions about legal fees. The concern has come up, that I've brought up about this aspect of it, is that we just got to, the council needs to be involved, that we've had meetings, I know we've had small group meetings with citizens, everybody's agreed, we got to get a handle on legal fees, and we keep upping those. As a matter of fact, we're upping them and putting them into a category that has been more clearly stated, that the city manager feels that he has the authority to, to spend on those legal fees as long as we stay within that budget item. I know that's, I've been in disagreement with that for special expenses, but we have taken, if anybody looks at our special expense section now, we're saying we've put that to a zero budget for any special fees that would come, and the, the budget actually outlines what those special areas would be, we've put that to zero, and we've, we've upped to the general council area to $165,000 to operate, just general... just general legal services for the city. I've made it clear before, I still see this as an issue, I also see it as an issue when us as a council are told that we don't really have any say when it comes to legal. We surely get the blame afterwards, no matter what the topic, we're the ones getting hit saying, "You guys are spending this." Yeah, the debate is that we're not really authorized, the question is that we're not authorized to approve these, that is being done by our city manager. I have expressed I don't feel that that's the proper way by our charter and the Uniform Budget Act, but if we look at this budget, we now have zero budgeted for special, which would include labor, property tax, we've got a lot of employee-related legal issues going on, and we have that budget at zero. And the general council budget, which is all outlined in our, the contract with the law firm, specifically states what's general and what's special. So that, I know I've talked about for a few years. One additional thing that has come up from the public that I think draws some good attention is, and this has been since our last meeting, is the amount of overtime in our police department since we've dropped, we're down staff, we know we're down staff, but we're going from a $65,000 average for overtime to about 105, 110, 120. That extra money, I think the police department's been asking that, they've been really bringing to our attention that we need to try to make them whole. Ironically, they would love to get some, get back up to some positions up, and I really think when we start taking some of these legal costs and getting a grasp of them, for example, FOIA's and these other things, combine that with a position, how much, I mean, we look history where our overtime is in the police department, now that we're down, we're spending 60,000 to 80,000 extra on top of the overtime budget already for overtime. That's what I have to say.
I'd like to speak on that topic. I have some of the same concerns, and I've been concerned about going into litigation and not getting council approval, and ultimately, we're the ones that are being asked. And I know our responsibility is the budget, just like any board of directors at any corporation, our company business. And my frustration has been there for the last year and a half at least. And so, on April 3, I wrote a letter to all the council members, and I also picked up the phone and talked to our financial director, and told him my concern on why I would vote no on the budget. And I outlined all my reasons, and all the things that I feel are concerns. I did not receive one call back from any council members outside of Mr. Stevens, or from any staff. Now, I've always found that when you communicate with people, you expect them to communicate back with you. And I have some real serious concerns about how we're spending our tax dollars. And as long as I have that responsibility in this chair, I feel obligated to raise those concerns. And I can't honestly look at any citizen in the eyes and say, "We're spending your money I can't do that. And so therefore, I have come out, I've said it, I'm really concerned, especially on the legal costs. When we look at our police department, I know that I worked very, very hard for a public safety millage, we almost passed it. The whole premise of that was to put another patrol officer. We're short, we're short on soldiers. And I know what the numbers are, what we do in Cadillac versus Wexford County, because I went to the county, talked to them about the millage that we pay for, or the money we pay for patrol, or for road patrol. And I'm real concerned. And I was provided with a number on overtime, within the last 450 days, we've spent on overtime $186,323.82. That's a lot of money for overtime. Now, I was in business with my father, two supermarkets, I know what overtime does. I mean, there's a point where you have to balance things out and say, "Do we need to hire someone? Yes, maybe? Yeah? What's the load?" I'm real concerned, and with the direction we're going, and especially with legal fees, and some other areas on how we handle things. And if it's council decisions, then it should be council decisions. And I feel that we've been left out in many cases in this puzzle.
Marcus, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that, or clarify in regards to those statements?
Sure, I can try to provide some clarification, perhaps out of order in the way that the statements were received. I cannot clarify the actual amount of overtime of 183 over the last 450 days over the year, but I can certainly advise that, a couple of things with respect to police. One, the civil service commission is in the process of filling entry-level position within the department in anticipation of the filling of higher-level positions. And so they're not waiting to have that process started until after the other positions are filled, because there's a desire to make sure that we maintain the minimum amount, at least the minimum amount of officers that we currently have. And so they'll be adding to that base sooner versus later. The second piece of that, on the overtime pieces, if there are a variety of factors that can contribute to overtime, certainly not having your full complement of staff is a primary factor to that contribution. In addition to that, however, the department has unfortunately suffered several injuries, illnesses, and other health-related situations that have also impacted the ability of having the full staff, if you will, at the ready, that has then created the cause for calling some of the officers back on overtime. It's a situation that ebbs and flows, it does not always happen to that great extent, but looking at the cost of having additional personnel put onboard, coupled with the cost of benefits in addition to the salary, even by having one additional person, you're not going to eliminate all your overtime. There's always going to be the need to have overtime, whether it's for special event management that's going to come forward, or because someone's on vacation, or sick, or injured, there's always going to be, there's always going to be that expense. And notably, we certainly have had our fierce year over the last year, but again, we've had some injuries and some other health-related situations impact the department. You know, with respect to looking at our legal expenses, and looking at the council's role with being involved, I cannot think of a single lawsuit in which the city was involved, where the council was not briefed on it. I can't think of a single lawsuit where we entered into litigation without getting council's approval. We've certainly been sued, we filed answers to the court within the prescribed timeframes that were required to do so, when we're defending ourselves. But I apologize that I'm unable to come up with an example. Perhaps there's one out there, I'm not saying there isn't, I just cannot think of that With respect to, you know, looking at the fees in general, you know, we are doing what we can to try to keep them contained. I've made some changes administratively, especially with respect to how we process FOIA's and shift of the responsibilities. Again, that will ebb and flow based upon the volume, and, not just the volume, but also based upon the nature of the requests themselves that come forward. We have seen a noticeable reduction in the costs over the last month or so, but I don't want to sit here and say that that's always going to be that way, because again, it's going to depend upon the volume, and it's going to depend upon the nature of the beast, if you will. So in fact, we are looking at having some of the new FOIA-related processes in front of council, like the next one issue, just as a free feature. I don't know, Mike or Owen, if there's anything you guys wanted me to add, that I might be not covering, or if you wanted to add anything on the overtime number?
Yeah, the overtime was based on a report that I provided subsequent to a FOIA request, and it provided a total number, and then below that total, it did say 450 days. That 450 days was based on a calculation of how many 12-hour shifts, how many 8-hour shifts, depending on what the person works. It was actually two full years of data. So it wasn't, it wasn't just 300 or 450 days of a number, it was actually two full years. That 450 was a calculation based on individual shifts.
I have a question, if I may. What are we pulling out of the reserves to balance the budget right now?
$99,000.
And what did we, what was in the budget to take out of reserves last year, do you remember?
Yeah, it was in the mid-100s, I can look it up here. That's gone up subsequently since the end of the year. I think we're maybe 250 or 260 at this point. With those numbers in there, and this 99, we would still remain at 23 1/3% of total general fund expenditures as a unreserved or unassigned fund balance, which still is 8% above our target of 15%. So, you know, I actually 100% agree with Mr. Maxwell, I don't want to use reserves either, but this kind of economy is exactly why you have them, in my opinion. It's allowed us, I think, to make a soft landing as we maintain plans for long-term structural operational balance. We're there operationally, now we just need to get some, you know, identify some funds to help us target a certain level of capital spending per year that comes from our operating millage. So I think we're, I think we're pretty much there in the general fund as far as operations go. We're planning the use of 99 for this year, there's 96,500 of capital expenditures in the general fund. So I think we're getting there, and I think we've used our reserves that we built in excess of our target through a period of years up until, you know, about five years ago, where we've lost 10% of our taxable value since. So I think we're making a soft landing, which I think is the, you know, exactly why you do that.
Well, thanks for those comments, I think that's really helpful. And I'm seeing, and I'm hearing, that we're starting to turn the corner in terms of our, you know, real estate values also. Those values are starting to go up, realtors are reporting being very busy, houses are selling, so hopefully we'll have increased revenue next year with that.
I know I did last time, I want to make sure the right disclaimer is there, that I want to give credit to Owen. The discussion that I'm having is discussions about people at this table. You have done an amazing job considering the financial limitations we have from the state and the different aspects of the city. So this discussion that I'm having here is a policy discussion, I do not want anyway to be looking at you or any of the staff's side of, with what you've been given, I know you spend a lot of time and effort to assure this, the budget fits, and I like to see how we can help make that easier for you, and not have you into these spots. But, you know, I, it's a very simple, you know, and we hear different answers, we hear it here, then we have a meeting with, you know, and I appreciate the mayor and Councilmember Melma, both of you have addressed this, you know, with me to ask, and we did have a meeting, and that meeting, it's clear that we don't need to know about these things, but when it comes to lawsuits, in that private meeting, a fact-checking, here we have two debates, Mr. Petch and I debating, the easiest fact-checking for the public is, if people can find minutes in our council meetings that show that we approved these, I will apologize 100%. But that's the fact-checking would be.
Councilmember Stevens, I've never said publicly behind closed doors that this council doesn't have the right to know about legal items or litigation items, never once. And we've had, you know, countless numbers of closed sessions over the years, doing just that, briefing the city council as to where things are at from a legal perspective, getting the opinion of the city attorney as far as options that are available, what the potential risks are with respect to the issues that have been before the city. The city council has then come out, and an open session has certainly made motions, if you will, adopting or moving forward with, you know, the opinions as, you know, as presented by the city attorney in closed session. So I apologize if you feel that you or any member of council has felt out of the loop with respect to any of our litigation items. Again, I thought we've done a pretty good job in communicating to council, to council on as timely of a manner as we possibly can, where things are at.
Well, I'd have to disagree with that. I feel that there's several areas, and I outlined that in my letter to council, and in my communications with our financial director. And I feel that there are many areas that we were not consulted with, or action was taken that we weren't aware of. Now, maybe some council members might have been aware of, but I've always believed that if you're going to have a team work, it's got to be all people, have to be on the same page, or at least communicated with. So I would take a reservation in saying that we're all on the same page, or we're all kept abreast on these issues.
I believe that we are all kept abreast on these issues via the closed sessions. As Mr. Petch has said, I know that there are some times when council members are not present for those, and might have missed some of those things, but I think, and after there was an expression of, you know, not feeling like in the loop, then we had a special meeting to go through, piece by piece, every single thing that's been going on. I don't know how much, maybe you were here for that meeting, Mr. Melma, I'm not sure, but I was at that meeting, and if you're talking about there being select people informed, they're the people that have attended the meetings and are at the closed sessions, and where this information is disseminated. You won't find specific legal cases, you'll find those things cited in, as we go into closed, as we go into closed session, you'll find, you'll be able to find where we come out, and we vote on whether to accept the recommendation of council, and that's where we approve those things. So we can send, you know, So we can send, you know, you're not going to, so the, being able to look and see where it is we approved, that's how that happens.
So you're trying, I mean, this is not a debate about, the simple matter comes down to is, you know, I've been tired for years of getting attacked for legal costs, we all have. And if you're going to try to state tonight that we approve all of those, I will very much disagree with that. I haven't been debating whether we get updates on them, sometimes it's after, sometimes it's during, but the question is about the approval process. And I think the public understands, just like our charter, we had a, you know, we had an independent review of this by Mr. Lutzman that went through aspects that we needed to improve on. And some of this is with the contract, if we read the contract and see how we're doing it. Consistency is going to get out of this site issue and who's for and not. But one thing, there's people in this crowd that have sat down with me that have said this legal stuff is out of control. I've made a commitment to them, some of them are sitting there, we've sat down and we all left that room saying that's a commitment, this is a commitment that I'm making, we need to get on this. If we want to get all this junk aside, we need to have it in process, we need to follow the steps and just call it good. That's my point. We now have zero budgeted for special. If we follow the contract, if we follow the charter, if we follow the Uniforms Budgeting Act, I don't know how we get around spending any money when we don't have anything budgeted for that. That's all I have to say.
I'd like to interject at this point, and, you know, I would just say that, you know, when you put a budget together, you do the best, absolute best that you can do based on the information that you have, there are always going to be variables. We've been in, you know, I beg to differ on the communication statements that were made earlier because I've spent a lot of times in time in meetings trying to talk about the process and the different perspectives of the process, and I thought that we had some good discussions. And I would ask Mr. Homier right now, if there is anything that we're doing in our processes, I think the majority of us feel as though we're being kept apprised and being notified the way that we should be, and so I guess I would like some input from you about anything that you see in our processes that is different than what you believe to be acceptable.
Well, this comes down to sort of an interesting issue, so let me give you an example, and I think maybe this will illustrate it. Let's suppose that the city gets sued, right? There are a couple of things that we do as a matter of course. One is we advise your insurance carrier to determine whether or not they will cover the claim. If the insurance carrier will cover the claim, they appoint counsel to assume a defense. That's different than the carrier's obligation to indemnify, which may be done under a reservation of rights, okay? That's the first thing. If the carrier determines that there is no coverage for a claim, then we immediately file an appearance and an answer to the claim because you only have, depending on how it's served, 21 or 28 days in which to answer. We do that as a matter of course because a lot of times complaints are drafted, Michigan is a state of general pleadings, which means you set forth various facts, and you may or may not quite understand the claim when it's made. So we file an answer or an appearance and file an answer. At that point, when the city receives a claim, I know that counsel is immediately notified of that claim. When we file an appearance, an answer, any motions, any discovery requests, all of those documents are provided to the city. That's no different than what we do for all of our municipal clients. So, is the process different here? No, it's not different here. Now, we've had some discussion about what the General Appropriations Act means pursuant to your charter, and we've had some discussions, and once the budget is approved, that those monies that are appropriated for legal fees, which include ordinance drafting, review of different ordinances, amending ordinances, utility work, general liability issues in terms of claims filed, all of those things fall into that bucket, and so the city then can appropriate those legal fees as it wants. In terms of the contract, however, when we talk about, and I believe that Mr. Stevens is getting to using the word specials, the only difference in terms of the contract is the rate at which those items are billed. So, when we started with the city in 2010, those rates have remained constant for the last five years, and that is for the general day-to-day stuff, which is most of the work, the rate is $175 an hour. For other specialized work like environmental stuff, property tax appeals, and litigation, the rate is $250 an hour. It's not a difference in the legal issues, it's a difference in the rate applied to those legal issues. And that's what Mr. Stevens keeps referring to as specials. There's not a special sort of legal category except as it pertains to the hourly rate for those issues. Other than that, I don't, you know, look, it's my obligation to advise the city. There is not one case in which I've been involved with where we haven't advised the city, both as to the nature of the claim and of the risks involved and of our recommendation on decisions that should be made.
Thank you.
And who's approving those?
Who's approving what?
There are two sections, it's very clear that the general, it outlines all the general duties, and you're right, it has no maximum, I'm not arguing that part. We just put that to 165,000 for general duties to budget, and they list, these are the general things, but then there's that special area. A question I think that needs clarification, and I'm not recommending this, but do we have to use your law firm under that contract for the special, in the area where special legal services, are we obligated under that contract to use you?
As I have advised the city in the past, the city is free to use any attorney that it wants to use.
Correct. And that's my point, but who is approving, this is where it's been, everything you said I agree, but who approves, when we go forward and it's, we're, say we're taking on a case, who's approving for the City of Cadillac that expenditure for that case?
Well, let me go.
I mean, like here, not like in the general term, but who has been doing that for the City of Cadillac?
Well.
The debate that we had in that meeting was that it's under Marcus's authority, and that's where the disagreement comes in.
When, if you're talking specifically, I presume that you're talking specifically about litigation cases?
Yes, yes, yep, as an example, or labor.
So, well, so for any sort of issue, depending on what, so for example, if it's a utility issue, Jeff will call me, and he'll say, "I need an ordinance amendment for this, that, or the other," okay? So I presume we're focusing just on litigation issues, right?
Yeah, let's say a lawsuit or a employee, one of our 12 suits or something like that.
So, immediately when there is a claim, whether it's an administrative claim or whether it's a lawsuit filed in circuit court, we try and get to the nature of the claim, get it sent to your insurance carrier if it's a claim for damages, and have them render an opinion as to coverage. In the meantime, my job as the city attorney is to ensure that the city preserves any and all legal options. So regardless of, once that claim is forwarded to me from the city, I start that process by telling the city to advise your carrier of the claim, by filing an appearance, and filing an answer if there is not an assumption of the defense. I do those things as a matter of course to preserve your legal claims. Immediately after an answer is filed, at the next meeting following that, I will advise the city council as to the nature of the claim and where I think it is and what recommendations I will make. That's as a matter of course.
And maybe you were the wrong person to ask the question, because you're, this isn't questioning your process, but to Marcus, who's approving those expenditures? If we have a case that's going to be 100,000, 20,000, 40,000, who's making the approval right now for those cases?
Well.
It's a very simple answer.
Well, but it's not a simple answer because the question is rather complex, and the way that it's being, the way that it's being presented doesn't really make a lot of sense. And the reason why I say that is because when the city is embarking on a legal item, whether it's labor, environmental, general, utilities, whatever the case may be, you don't know when you're moving it forward, whether it's going to be 50 bucks or 50,000 bucks. And my answer, and the complexity in my answer, I think, should hopefully try to clarify that it isn't a simple question. You don't, you know, it's going to depend on whether you're talking about an actual litigation piece or whether we're just simply talking about the preparation of an ordinance amendment to adopt new fees. The city attorney, who is Foster Swift, the company, is the appointed law firm for the city. So by default, whether it's me or whether it's another member of my staff that's going to go and seek their legal advice, is going to call the appointed city attorney for that advice. We're not going to pause the process unless, of course, it's something that the city council wants us to do, issue out a new request for proposals to then seek legal services for any specific or particular item. It has never been how the city has operated before, to my knowledge, and it's.
I feel.
Create a significant delay of moving things forward.
If I may, I think I'm seeing you guys shaking your head as Marcus is explaining how it goes, and when you said that perhaps Mike was not the person to ask, I think Mike was exactly the person to answer that. Are you saying, like, who sends these things to the law, to our attorney? Who forwards them, like, when these things come in? And I think the city attorney said if it comes from utilities, Jeff sends it, if it comes to the general city, I imagine Marcus sends it, if it comes from someplace else, they send it there. But as Mr. Homier said, whatever happens with that, we are brought in the loop at the very next meeting. Do you think, are you saying that it's not within the purview of the city manager to seek counsel when these things come into the city? That it should first go through us before seeking counsel when these things show up? Is that what you're asking?
No.
Does the city manager have the legal right, according to our charter, to operate in that manner? Because I have a feeling that your question and your line of questioning is, I feel like there's an attempt at trying to put this, that somehow Marcus is acting on his own and running out there and running up legal fees, and that we're left out of the loop. And that's absolutely false. And we get emails, I don't know how often you read your emails, but every time something comes there, do we all get them? I know we're not all copied on them, like when we get stuff from some other people, but doesn't that violate the Open Meetings Act when we all get, it's on the edge of that, so we get blind copies? Is there just a few of us that you're notifying of these things? Okay, so that was my assumption. If that was happening, that would clearly be wrong. But I have had emails with heads-up of all these things that come through, and if you like, I can start listing the dates that they all came, but it is your job, as I see it, to keep abreast of your emails, to attend the meetings and the work sessions and the closed sessions, and if you're not able to be there to blame somebody else for not being in the loop, I find just kind of shocking.
This is getting, this is.
Do not interrupt me.
I didn't know you were still going there.
Shaking your head and shutting somebody down is not civil. And I'm just saying here that when you hear an answer that you don't want, it's like it's not the right answer, and that gets extremely frustrating in dealing with things. I'm going to stop, I'm finished, go ahead now.
All right. Well, I think that, you know, I think that we have had the opportunity to talk about the concerns, and, you know, I think that we all have many of the same concerns as it relates to legal expenses. But tonight, our job is to take a look at this budget and move us into the next fiscal year, and I think that we have been doing some really good things to make a positive difference in the direction this budget is going for the next year, and that's what I'd like to focus on.
Yeah, I want to piggyback on that. Our job as councilmembers is to enact the ability for us to use the dollars that have been given to us from the taxpayers and to do it in a fiscally responsible way. And to respond to the comment about taking money out of the reserves to be able to balance the budget, I think Owen did a really nice job of addressing the fact that we have those reserves and we have more than enough reserves. Our job is not to stockpile those reserves, because those reserves are taxpayers' dollars, and we need to operate the city the best that we can with those dollars, not stockpile them. And if we have a problem with the way that, you know, we're allocating some of these resources, that's a little bit different than whether or not we're going to approve this budget. And I would, you know, just caution us not to let that policy issue or managerial issue get in the way of passing a really good budget, because as Mayor Philkins alluded to, there's a lot of really good things in this budget, and we've got some excellent projects down the road with the place plans project and the Rotary Pavilion renovation, and, you know, if that's all we're going to do about, is argue about whether or not we can put a budget into place to have our operations as we need them to be, starting July 1st, and then not being able to do some of those special projects, those, the street projects that we have planned, you know, we're just going to get tripped up here. But we all agree, legal fees are way too high. I don't think there's, I don't think there's one of us that don't agree, and we had the same conversation last year, and we haven't gotten a handle on it yet.
Three before.
And at the same time, when we listen to our attorney, you know, and he talks about, "Well, when you get sued, you have to respond." So we keep having that problem, and, yeah, we need to address it. We need to figure out a way where we're not spending so much money on attorney fees, there's no question about that.
Let me try to use a common sense approach here. If I give my son a credit card to go to college, and am I going to look over that statement if it comes in and it's way out of proportion? Am I going to look at that statement and see how he spent his money, and then take a look at what I have to pay? So what my point is, is that procedures, policies, direction, all reflect themselves in budget. And when I address that in April 3rd, that's what I addressed, is some of our policies, some of our procedures and actions that we have taken and how they reflect to the budget. And that's the communications I wanted, a discussion on that. But I surely look over my statement to see if I'm being charged more for a certain area. I certainly look at my bank statements, and that's exactly my point, is that those things reflect on the amount of money that you're paying out. And it's not my money, it's not staff's money, it's a citizen's money.
Yeah, I don't think we're disagreeing.
I don't think anybody's disagreeing. Okay, so I'd like to get us back to business at hand, and that's to make a motion to approve the 2016 fiscal year budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number 2000. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance number 2015-08, establishing General Appropriation Act for fiscal year 2016. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
No.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Mayor and members of council, it is required a four sets majority, supermajority votes and a motion did not pass. As required by charter, as our finance director mentioned earlier, we do need to have the budget in place before the end of this month.
So we'll have to call a special meeting?
Unless there's an alternative budget already prepared by the council members who did not approve of it.
No, I've expressed mine. I know we had a lot of discussion, I feel bad for the public. But, you know, I know Councilmember Malama gave two months' notice. I was the only one that communicated with him on his concerns, where I disagree with you, I've made this clear. How many, you guys used to roll your eyes every meeting I talked about legal. Not one person questioned my process, no one, most of the time, people agreed with me and says, we'll deal with it. I've had people, I've had commitments, some of them can't stand me. But I've sat down and I've sat in rooms and I said, here's what I'm going to do. We've all said that. And that's my point. I believe that we have one thing that if we took a survey, both sides would, that would probably bring the community together, is on legal fees, we got to get a handle of it. It hasn't worked for years. This is one area, I think, I was not aware by the next meeting, we couldn't, but I think a work session where we start focusing on some of these areas and look at lowering on the legal.
So you would pass a budget if we reduce the amount in the budget for legal fees?
Or if we at least get the budget and bring that section back for amending to have a thorough discussion on the procedures, the process. It's hard, the public, to understand that we're the board. You go to the manufacturers, they're going to probably tell, they're going to know, the board's going to know about it, the board's going to understand it. We're making it complex. This is one way that we need to, I know we can't stop the divisions in this community, they're going to be there. It's ironic because I'm going to have people that are against me on this that had been blaming me for the same problem. The one way that we can get this going and show leadership is to get a structure that's consistent, that's by the charter, by the Uniform Budget Act, and we do it consistently and it's done.
Councilmember Stevens, I am really sorry, but the allegation that we're not following...
I need to remember how you said about...
We're not following the charter needs to stop because we are.
Well, then let's, I...
And I have offered on several occasions that we bring the city attorney forward with a legal opinion regarding your concern over the appropriations, to which you've offered that, no, it's not, we don't need to.
A legal opinion by the attorney that is involved with this.
Yes, yes, exactly. By the attorney that is the appointed attorney of the City of Cadillac, and I think that's what we're going to do.
Mr. Stevens, if you're suggesting that I'm somehow, or I would not deliver to you a legal opinion based upon the charter or my obligation to the city...
I did not say that.
Yes, you did, sir.
Well, look, there's a simple, and I've advised the city of this, and I'll advise you this again because it was five years ago. The more dysfunctional the community is, the more you will pay in legal fees. Now, I don't go out and ask people to sue the city. For instance, I never approached Louis Richardson to file a frivolous claim. That cost the city $25,000. He has yet to reimburse the city. So there's 25,000 of your legal expenses. I don't ask for 10 FOIA requests filed for what I believe are politically motivated purposes, sometimes reviewing thousands of pages of documents that have to be redacted because they contain attorney-client privileged material that we won't release. I don't ask for those things. If you take really all of your substantive issues, your legal fees should be about between $100,000, $150,000 a year. And over the course of time, I believe this to be the case, your legal fees have actually decreased. So I don't create these issues. These issues are created sometimes by political issues in the community. And I tell each and every one of my clients that if you cannot work together, your legal fees will increase substantially. I've been doing this for 15 years, I know what I'm talking about.
Okay, I'd like to make a suggestion that this evening, that, is it possible, Marcus, that we move forward with the approval of the budget minus that budget line item and then schedule a meeting between now and the required date?
We would need to, it's more than just a single line item, it would be the fund, well, it would be the line items within all funds that, which legal...
Okay, I just don't want this discussion to shut down the city operations, which is what is going to happen, based on the vote. And that's not going to happen.
Our new budget year starts July 1st. We have plenty of time to this...
No, we don't. We need to approve this budget.
That's what...
By the end of May, and that's not very far away, and it's also before our next council meeting. So I'm asking, is it possible to approve the rest of the budget minus the legal until we can meet?
Before I, that's always what I say.
Thank you, okay, just leave it at that, thank you.
We have legal, and that's, what do we have, $200,000 budgeted? We don't have to have that till July 1st.
No, we don't do that.
Okay, then what I'd like to do is to ask for a motion to approve the budget minus the lines of the budget that have to do with the legal discussion that needs to take place between now and the end of May. Could we have a motion?
Do we, I mean, just for your timing, because I know about people's meetings, does that have to be done by the end of May, that section?
Yes.
Or does that just have to be done by July 1st?
We're in uncharted territory here, council member. I would say to play it completely safe, we would want it done by the end of May.
If it would simplify things, I could, you know, I could just offer that, you know, we could amend it into the budget at any time, really. But I would recommend that we do that very soon, especially relative to July 1st.
Well, I'm committing before the end of May. That's what I'd like to see happen because then if we have to meet a second time, then we'll give ourselves time. I don't want to do it on June 25th and then not be ready to go on July 1st. So I would like us to commit to at least having our first meeting before the end of May.
I'd make a motion that we approve the budget as presented, minusing out under the General Government section, the Legal Services section of the $200,000.
I'll support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Um, I find holding the entire city hostage over some, an issue of that, that I think is, I won't say what it is, I find that just dastardly, that, do people realize what not having a budget, shutting down the city would mean? No fire? No police? Not sure about water and sewer? That's what that is. That's what that no vote is, a willingness for that. And to hold everybody in this city hostage to make your point that you're not happy with being in a minority position on this board and perhaps not having the ability to dictate who and what does what, I find just appalling. But in order to move forward, I vote yes.
Spohman?
No.
I'm disgusted.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
No.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
So we will shut down our city.
You did, because this is what's ironic.
I pardon me.
No.
Pardon me.
What you're saying is, we, if we, this is why we have elected, wait, that's, we have elected people to give our input. I have brought up this legal issue for a long time, I have offered to lower it. All we had to do was take that one item out and do this. They do that with budgets all the time.
We have to have a line item in our budget for legal services. It's already lower than it was this current year.
And we were going to do that...
Which is what we thought would be a reasonable amount. It's 20% lower than what we're currently at.
And we could negotiate that later and go forward with approving the rest of the budget.
Okay, guys, we're going to end the discussion this evening on the budget, and we're going to have to commit to come back within a very short period of time to have the discussion again. But we've got a lot of people from the public here this evening that wanted to talk about some good things that are happening in the city, and I think that's what we need to Okay, and the next thing on the agenda is communications.
Yes, it's being requested to approve the display of a banner from June 22nd to June 29th for Relay for Life.
I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from June 22nd to the 29th for the Relay for Life.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
The second request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harrison-Cass from 6:00 AM to 2:30 PM on June 27th for the Lake Cadillac Team Marathon event.
Do we have somebody here for that?
I don't.
No? Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the closure of Lake Street between Harrison-Cass from 6:00 AM to 2:30 PM on June 27th for the Lake Cadillac Team Marathon.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
The third request is for the closure of Lake Street between Harrison-Cass from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on the following dates, June 29, July 4, which is already actually closed for the Freedom Festival, July 6, July 13, July 20, July 27, August 3, and August 10 for the Clam Lake Band Summer Concerts.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for the dates as presented for the Clam Lake Band.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, then we have the city's main, city manager's report this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item is a request from Back to the, from the Back to the Bricks Cruise Cadillac event for four additional road closures to help accommodate the event. As you'll notice within your packet, we're simply going to be asking for the city council to authorize all necessary road closures or lot closures as needed for the event. Should there be any more additional adds, moves, or changes as the date gets closer and the final logistics get known, that way it frees us up to do what's necessary. There are some folks, I'm not sure, I think so, okay, that are here that are representational of the Back to the Bricks Committee. Thank you for coming this evening, and if you wouldn't mind sharing at the podium some of the items that you have about the event, that'd be great to get that public information out.
Absolutely. Do you have a copy of the, of this, I think was distributed? Okay. So you kind of know, this is a full two-day event now. I just, we just wanted to share with you and with council because we, and with the community, because we weren't able to be here when you did the first road closure approvals because we had, we typically meet right now to put this together. So as you can see, I have a pretty large committee, and this is only half of them. This is probably a quarter of them, actually, because there's several other community members that are involved, too. So if we would just real quick stand up, and you can introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Just go ahead.
Carrie Thompson, Cadillac Worksford Transit, and we're going to be providing a shuttle this year.
Yes.
Lee Richards, Avon Automotive, kind of representing the industrial group, and we've got some good support coming out of that group for this, and I think I'm also handling entertainment, so enjoy.
Mark Featherstone with the Cadillac Downtown Cadillac Association.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff Rourke, Cadillac Police.
Yeah, so, I mean, we have a committee of 14 people, I believe, and the rest of them are car enthusiasts or they're volunteers in our office. So just to give you a quick highlight, this year, we're looking at close to 600 cars attending the event, specifically on Sunday, hopefully drawing about 300 or so cars on Saturday, at least half of those on Saturday. So on Sunday, or on, new to this year, let me jump back, new this year in order to raise funds, last year, we actually lost a couple thousand dollars in the budget on it. So the Visitors Bureau picked that up. So my board wasn't too happy with me, but we figured it out this year. So we are selling, any community member that thinks this event is really cool at different outlets around the community, you will be able to buy a $5 raffle ticket, and it comes with a commemorative button, the raffle ticket, they're $5. So we have a list of them on our website. If you go to backtobricscadillac.org, you can find a list of the locations in town that they're available, or you can always find them at our office downtown. We're in the old City Hall building, right adjacent to this building here. And the first class, first cash prize is $2,000. We have a $1,000 second prize, and we have two $500 third and fourth prizes. So it's $4,000 that we're going to give away at 4 o'clock on Sunday to some lucky winner here in Cadillac. So we're pretty excited about that. And the commemorative button will also get the people who purchase the tickets additional discounts to businesses around the community that are supporting the event as well. So we're pretty excited about that. So we're hoping to raise some needed funds to pay for all of the portages and, you know, event insurance and banners and signs because we have a lot of logistics. And part of the team is meeting with MDOT tomorrow morning to finish the traffic control process because once you get that many cars coming in, plus the 5,000-plus spectators coming into town, we really need to make sure that we understand and are funneling all of those people into our community the correct way so it just doesn't turn into some crazy mess downtown. So last year, we kind of had a plan, and it exploded on us. So we're really excited this year to be able to have a little bit more of a plan, and hopefully it will explode, but in a good way. So on Saturday, we have the Blessing Out of Godfrey, new, we have, the Fun Run is, it's a fun run for vets. And the Fun Run, if you, you don't have to have a classic car in order to support that. So the Fun Run is a 12-location, all the way out towards Coyote Crossings, down to Bristol Store, out to Lake City. It's a cruise around the greater community. So it's, and the money is to support the vets. So if you want additional details, again, you can go to backtobricscadillac.org. We also have the 1225 Pier Marquette Steam Train coming in on Saturday. And that was, that's kind of blossomed from our partnership with them for the Fall Color Tour train. So we're really excited to be able to bring that steam train, it's the first steam train that we've had in town in close to a decade. It'll be the first time that a steam train or a train has, a passenger train, has moved from Cadillac to Manton in probably 20 years or more, or ever. They can't really find record, but they think it, they had something going on 20 or 30 years ago. So we're really excited about that. And those tickets are, again, online, the links are... all on our website. We also have on Saturday, we have an automotive exhibit downtown, and what that is, is they've taken hoods, it's a, this is a cooperative with the Flint Arts Council. So Back to the Bricks originally, and still is, a partnership with our community and the city of Flint, so we've extended it even further into partnering with their Arts Council down there to bring this idea up here, and hopefully, I'm hoping to be able to spawn some creativity within our Arts Council here in Cadillac, to be able to embrace this idea. So what they do is, they have 20 to 30 automotive hoods that they give to their local artists, and the local artists paint them. And what they are is, they have a hood manufacturer in the Flint area, and so they're scrap. So it's kind of a recycle art-type thing, so it's called Art-A-Motive, and we're gonna have a handful of those on display down in the city park on Saturday and Sunday. And we've also wrapped that into our Art Walk downtown, so the steam train passengers and the registrants for Sunday are also gonna be wrapped into a really cool Art Walk with the automotive and some cash prizes and different things, too. So just lots of fun things going on. And then on Saturday, we also have the sock hop and buffet dinner and different things to wrap up the day up at Evergreen, formerly Maguire's, if you didn't know, their name changed. So then on Sunday, we are shutting the streets down at 8:00 AM. Registration is from 8:00 AM to noon. The new thing for registration, again, is that we're not registering people downtown because of the complexity of trying to park 600 cars on Mitchell Street. We're registering everybody at the junior high. So we're gonna be funneling everybody up Chestnut to Pine Street, and then funneling them out onto Mitchell Street, south and north. So we're really excited. So the one bookend will be the city park, going up Harris Street, Cass Street, and then we'll go all the way down in front of the Legion for breakfast Sunday morning, and all the way down to where Maggie's is, North Street and Bremmer Street. So lots of cars, lots of spread, lots of things to do. So we'll actually have another bookend of activity and different things over at Canfield's area as well, in their lot. And then we also have an exhibit where the industrial group is gonna help us put together a nice little exhibit with maybe some Four Winds Boats and some other things. Jensen RV and a couple other vendors are gonna have some other products on display on Harris Street between Serendipity and The Escape. So we're really excited about that. So kind of, lots of things going on, so really cool day downtown. Let me think. And then the big thing that I think is awesome, CWTA has stepped up this year with their new director, we're really excited to have her in town. So they're stepping up this year, and they're gonna be offering free shuttles for people from the high school to downtown, they're gonna be looping around the event and dropping off on either end, and then picking up, so like 15-minute intervals throughout the whole entire event on Sunday. So really excited about that, so really spread the word, let your friends know, if you're coming into town from out of town, you don't live in town, there's a free shuttle, you don't have to worry about parking, you can park at the school. We also have a handful of designated VIP parking spaces downtown, where we have the Rotary Club, and the Interact Clubs that are gonna be manning those to be able to make a little bit of cash off of parking, really close parking areas. So we've really engaged the community and a lot of different organizations this year, too. We also have the Viking Boosters, Sports Boosters Club, that's gonna be doing 50/50 raffles up and down the strip on Sunday. We have the State Howard Clinic that's gonna be doing 50/50 raffles Saturday morning and Saturday evening. So really trying hard to embrace the community, but also embrace all of our visitors, because last year, last year it looked like we had, the 5,000 to 6,000 people we had on Mitchell Street on Sunday, more than half of those people were not from Cadillac. Okay, so this is our day to shine. So I would urge you guys to put down the barriers, come up to Mitchell Street, and have fun on Sunday. Even if, half of you have to be on one side of the event, the other has to be on the other side of the event. I would love to see you guys come down and enjoy the event. So do we have anything else that we want to add to that?
It's a mile long.
Yeah, and if we put the cars end to end, we'll have a little over a mile of cars, so we're really excited. Do you guys have any questions for us?
I just wanna say that I absolutely love your passion for this event and the other things you do in Cadillac. Every time you come out of the gate, you get great people behind you, and you always have new ideas, and you keep building and building and building, and I just love Cadillac.
Yeah, well, there's no I in team, so you have to pull the right team members together to make it work.
You do, and you guys do just a great job.
It's been good that way, so. And the city's support, you know, the police department, the sheriff's department, the state police will be there to help, they're gonna have their own exhibit of some classic police cars, you know, so there's just gonna be, just pulling things in from all over the place, so trying to network and make sure everybody has a good time and capture those tourism dollars as much as we can, so, okay?
Thank you all.
Joey, after that last thing, probably me talking scares you, but...
No, you're fine. I know you.
I have to tell you, you and the committee deserve so much credit. I mean, the reason this has grown is because of that, and I agree with the mayor. You were down at the auto show, I mean, I talked to Jeff Valentine multiple times during the day. I had people calling me that weren't even from Cadillac saying, "Hey, I just saw a booth." And the key was, Joy has a lot of joy, as the couple of them said. But the committee, seriously, to make it so successful, and when's the last time our communities shut down Main Street for something like this for that long of a period of time? And that nice flyer you have on it is just outstanding.
The postcard, yeah.
That shows the whole thing.
We shipped out 10, we went through 10,000 postcards, we went through over 350 posters. The Visitors Bureau spent probably about $4,000 or $5,000 directly just on advertising. So, I mean, it's a very good benefit for the community, and one of the big reasons why I push to have a two-day event, because it brings people in for the whole weekend, so. I mean, obviously, I work for the Visitors Bureau, so I gotta make sure that I fill my hotels, or else I don't have any money, so the more money I can get, the more fun we can have.
I do have just one question, Joy, and I'm sure you already have the answer to it, but the VIP parking, that, the one is like right behind all the businesses there where the clam is at, and they're all on board with this down there, right?
Yeah, the alleyway is not part of that, though.
Right.
So the alleyway will be available for their own, yeah, their own use, yeah.
Our staff usually park where it's...
Yeah, and we're also communicating with all of the businesses downtown to have their staff actually park at the school and use the shuttle to come up.
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the only thing that I wondered about.
You need the council to organize the weather.
Yes, if you could organize the weather, that would be great, for that whole weekend.
We can't do anything about that.
For that whole weekend, you know, and then purchase your ticket, your raffle ticket, wear your button proudly, you know, this is the first of many of great car shows to come to town, so.
Joy.
Yay, got my first, my first one, I'm just telling everybody else to sell them, and I have a whole lot in it.
Thank you.
Just wanted to also mention to council, as a part of the request for approval this evening, while we're keeping it open regarding the street closures, we also want to make sure that as part of the motion, it's mentioned approval of the temporary no parking signage, and that would be temporary no parking signs that get displayed throughout the course of the event.
And the parking, and like just the directionals, because we're directing people on 115 to come in Chestnut, and really spectators on Chestnut, because I drove it, and we need some new streets on Chestnut, that's for sure, because those classic cars are not gonna be very happy driving down Chestnut. So we're gonna have to redirect them down, Chestnut, probably Chestnut, so, a little bit differently.
And so the motion that's drafted would cover that.
Okay, yeah.
For clarification, did we already approve the street closure for Mitchell?
The street closure for Mitchell was approved by City Council, we're working out the final details with MDOT. We've also approved, I believe, some additional closures as well to accommodate the Polar Express Steam Train to come in. This evening, there are about four or five additional, additional street-related closures surrounding the general area, and I think the better way, or the best way to approve it would simply be to direct staff to make additional street and parking lot closures, and the display signage is requested. That way we can, we can work with them as the event evolves, because it's possible that you might say, you know, we need to do a different approach.
Right, and, you know, the group is meeting with MDOT tomorrow, so, I mean, they're traffic gurus up there, so they know traffic control really well, so if they come up with something that we haven't thought of, we may need to, you know, move things around a little bit.
That way it allows us to do it administratively versus having to put it back on the agenda.
I'll make the motion to direct the city manager to direct city staff to make additional street and parking lot closures and to display appropriate signage as requested.
Support.
Joy.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'll get one for Doug at TIT.
Awesome.
Hope she'll take it, she may.
Seriously, thank you.
I'll continue on.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
We're just getting our buttons here.
You're still there, thank you. So this next item is the acceptance of a sculpture and its location. I must give credit to Kelly Smith of Baker College Cadillac and Carl Marcus of Padnose for putting this together. They have collaborated in having a sculpture titled Diversity constructed by Padnose. Padnose has a rather robust public art program, and this is something that they have brought to us as part of a donation. Within your packet is a picture of the sculpture itself, to simply describe it. It's four people colored, I believe it's black, white, red, and yellow, in a circle, almost like they're holding hands. The location identified is also in your packet, there the adjacent map. It's immediately to the west of the new ADA Accessible Playground and to the east of the current lakefront parking lot. That's the area where our city engineer and public works director and parks superintendent took a look and thought that it might really fit nicely there. So the action that we're looking for council to support this evening would be the acceptance of the sculpture as well as of the site, and I'm not sure Kelly or Carl, if you have anything...
Carl, I want to share.
I want to share about it.
Had no background on it.
Sure.
Sure.
Hello, my name's Carl Marcusy. I'm the district manager for Padnose in northern Michigan. My company has a long history, like Marcus said, a robust public arts program, starting with the son of the founder, Louis Padnose, actually started the company back in 1905 in Holland, and his two sons took over the business. Stuart would be one of them, and I'm not sure if any of that information is included in the letter, if there's an attachment there. Anyway, Stuart began making art out of the scrap, we're a scrapyard, not a very glamorous industry that we're in, but we've always, as a company, always valued community, and certainly valued recycling, reusing what we do have, and constructing art out of the scrap that comes in is just one way that we are able to make use out of stuff that's being thrown away by other people. The history behind the art, Stuart Padnose's wife was an artist and kind of inspired him to get back into it, we're going back 40, 50 years now, and the company's contributed artwork all across the state in many of the communities where we have locations, most notably in west Michigan, though. We very often supply material for art prize, in fact, we sponsor, or we provide a lot of material for art prize to artists who simply request it. We have a sculpture at the Gerald R. Ford Presidential Museum, Stuart Padnose and Gerald Ford were friends, and so we have, one of our sculptures is down there. And then, of course, in Holland, we have an awful lot of scrap sculptures spread around the community there. So anyway, like I said, wherever we have locations, we do have a location here in Cadillac, it's one of our smallest locations, actually. We only employ a handful of people there, under 10, usually between 5 and 10 employees. And the discussion has come up that we want to encourage art, or the community is seeking more art downtown, and we thought, what better way that we could be a part of the community than by donating this sculpture? So I'm open to questions, if you have anything you want to talk about, if you'll have it, we'd love to give it to you.
Thank you very much.
It's outstanding. I'd like to, do you want to say something?
No, I think it's great, I love the reuse of items also, and I love the theme of diversity and putting that where it's been selected, on the little walkway there to the playground.
Perfect.
It's a perfect spot.
And we really appreciate the gift.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the sculpture titled Diversity and to approve the location as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. As we embark on our next item, this is with respect to the request for award to a local consultant for our place plans project, our Cadillac Heritage Plaza project. It is important for me at this moment to note to the council how our Jerry Adams, our community development director, this is his very last evening with us, as he will be starting his retirement effective tomorrow. Jerry was instrumental in working with a host of different stakeholders and staff members of the state of Michigan as we put this together, if you will. It's been a long time coming, this is just one of many projects, and two Jerries left, with Jeff sliding out of the way, is John Wallace, who will be serving in our community development role. Obviously, Jerry may this evening add some final touches to what I say, but John may also add as well, and so I just wanted to publicly point that out, and certainly to thank Jerry yet again, once again, for his services. So this evening, we are looking at a proposal that the city has received from both Prine and Newhoff, coupled with DK Design, as I mentioned, both are homegrown local groups. We did have a request for qualifications sent out in March of 2015. We received several of them back, and we moved forward with a review team in looking at three of them pretty hard. The recommendation this evening, again, is going to be for Prine and Newhoff and the DK Design Group. We also looked very seriously at MC Smith Associates, as well as Fleyce and Vanderbrink. Some of the key elements that really made us want to move forward with Prine and Newhoff, I'm gonna refer to the write-up, include the team certainly being able to design, engineer, and perform construction management-related services for the project. They have offices located here in town, in our city, they have the ability, as I mentioned, to do the work, they also have the lowest price of the three that we looked at. Their price is essentially $52,500, again, it's being estimated, and that's based on construction engineering being 5% of total cost. The total costs that were used as a part of that estimate is the same number that was part of our capital improvement budget, or part of the project seed of $550,000. That number may certainly fluctuate, it could go up or it could go down. MC Smith and Associates came in at $65,750, based on their estimated engineering costs of 8.5% of the total project, and then Fleyce and Vanderbrink advised that it would come in between 16% and 19%, which would make that number anywhere from approximately $88,000 to $104,500. There are representatives from Prine and Newhoff here this evening. There are representatives from Prine and Newhoff here this evening. Prine and Newhoff is essentially of the Prine and Newhoff slash DK Design team, will be taking the project lead role. Just as a reference or as a reminder about the project in general, the city was very successful in obtaining some grant monies to two-hundred thousand dollars from the state of Michigan to help us really kickstart Phase One. The Phase One essentially includes the burial of utility lines that we're hoping will be able to get done this fall. In addition to that, the reconfiguration and design of Elk Avenue and the parking area to, immediately to the west. There are a number of attributes, soft scaping attributes, as well as hard scaping attributes, that this process is through the place plans project, we try to employ to create pedestrian pathways, safer vehicular movement within vehicles within that lot. We're incredibly excited about moving this project forward. We do have, as another point of information, some dollars within our budget amendment that we're looking at putting forward later this evening to kickstart that design work, since the appropriation would need to be made accordingly. And then, obviously, as we look forward to our next fiscal year budget, we're going to need to budget for the remainder. And as I say, that there's certainly the possibility as well, as we're into this next fiscal year, that additional amendments might be needed based upon obtaining more outside funding, which is certainly a goal of ours to try to do, and as the scope of the project might evolve, there might be other aspects to it that might come forward. Jerry and/or John, is there anything that you feel needs to be added?
No, I think you've covered it really well. I think we were blessed with three strong proposals, and the local team, I think, was very strong, and with their ability to be so convenient on the construction management side, and also on the price, I think that definitely was in their favor in the final selection.
Right, no, that's a good point, especially with respect to what John was saying, on construction management, being so close and the ability of stopping by the project essentially on a daily basis is a nice attribute, so.
I'd like to just add, you know, you have two very professional, sometimes competitors, both from the city, who for this project decided to join forces. It's kind of a unique experience, I believe, for us, and I think that's one of the things that makes the team strong, as well as really is a benefit to the community.
I did notice when I was reading through this earlier today, I was really pleased to see that, that competitive spirit come together for something so important in the community. Yeah. Yeah, so you said we have people here, would you like to come up and say anything?
Sure.
No, I wouldn't tell them.
I just told them we had to do the pledge of allegiance, and it was in. So, I'm Connie Houck, and I'm the lead civil engineer here, and I manage the Prine and Newhoff office. We're at the north end of Cadillac in the old Wexford County Transit Building, so just within the city limits, right next to Don's Auto Clinic. So we're very excited and thankful to be selected for this. We've been waiting for this project to come for quite a while, and Dean DeCrager and I just thought this would be a great opportunity for us to team together and put his architectural services with our engineering services and make this look... It's just such a focal point of the city, I mean, just the connectivity and the vital link between the businesses and the city park and the lake and all the visitors to Cadillac. So we're very excited to be working on this project and want to get going as soon as we can on it, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we award the contract for designing, engineering, and managing the construction of the Cadillac Heritage Plaza to Prine and Newhoff Design Group as accepting the proposal that they presented to the city.
Support.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item is a similar request, a request to authorize approval of moving forward with Prine and Newhoff with respect to our asset management plan development. The city has received four responses to the request for qualifications that was issued. The responses were from Johnson and Anderson, C2AE, Fleyce and Vanderbrink, and again, Prine and Newhoff. There was a study team or a review team that looked at the responses and analyzed them. The city noted that staff has had a good relationship working with Prine and Newhoff. Prine and Newhoff did write and submit the original application for the grant. The grant that we did receive was a two-million-dollar grant with a zero local match provision. So I can say, while I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's the largest grant we've ever gotten, it certainly ranks, it certainly ranks up there as probably the largest grant we've ever gotten, especially with the zero funding match. The city's, excuse me, the internal J.S. staff and capabilities offered by Prine and Newhoff, again, were plus. All of the J.S. work will be done in-house. Prine and Newhoff, again, as we mentioned earlier, does have a local office and local staff. They have identified that at least forty-three percent of their labor that they're going to be looking at charging will be done by employees out of the Cadillac office, and that their hourly rates supplied of various project staff are lower than the other firms. I'm not sure if Jeff, you, or Owen, or Bruce have any comments to make about the selection process, other than just simply stating about the recommendation, again, is to go with our local firm for this project as well.
Yeah, I just would want to add that, you know, it's difficult to attach a dollar amount to this one, because the activities out of the two million dollars vary so greatly and, in fact, aren't even set in stone at this point. Part of what we're going to do over the next few weeks is figure out what we're going to do with the two million dollars exactly. So all of the firms identified, really about a million dollars or so from the outset, that their firm would do directly, and then there's contracts for other things like, you know, wastewater rate studies, there's TVing and cleaning of pipes that is going to be done via contract, things like that, that we pointed out in the communication, that won't be done maybe directly by them, but they will be administering all that. So we're going to award one contract to them for all of these various services, and unless we purchase a big piece of equipment, which we may, we're going to look at doing, as well as some GIS equipment, those kinds of things, if we're going to purchase them and they're going to be our asset at the end of the day, then those will come back to council, again, bid out separately for equipment-type things like that. So along with updates that you'll receive from us and from Prine and Newhoff along the way, you're also going to see a couple more things related to purchasing for this project, so just wanted to provide that, a little bit of additional detail.
Similar with the other, the other one we just talked about as well, there's, as a part of a request of budget amendment this evening, some dollars that we needed to appropriate to kickstart the project now versus waiting until after July one.
Do we have some idea of what kind of equipment? I mean, wouldn't we want to maximize the amount of equipment that we would be able to get in this project, because that'll be here for a long time?
Yeah, so we have up to like eighty-five thousand dollars to spend on GIS stuff, and so part of that will be services, part of that will be, you know, we can upgrade our computers, we can upgrade, you know, our plotter, things like that, so, you know, our plotter is probably ten, twelve years old, I think, and so all of those things are eligible to do, so we're going to take full advantage of those dollars. Jeff, in his planning, has wanted a, you know, this, a camera for the pipe for some time, and these things are pretty costly, you know, six figures or more, depending on what you get, and so if we are able to buy it and utilize our staff and our equipment, then the grant can reimburse us on a per-foot basis for what we do ourselves. You can't necessarily directly buy that piece of equipment, but as our staff does grant-eligible work with the equipment, then that helps, that money comes back to us to help offset the cost of that equipment then. So we're going to try and maximize the value as we work with them on what we can end up with as far as equipment and other assets that we can purchase as well.
I think it's a good thing to note, too, going back to our council, that I remember going back to the application for this, that wasn't the recommendation initially, another company was, and your company was represented here, and that was a great decision. First, thank you for coming to that meeting, because if you remember, it was a debate, and we got approval, number one, but number two, you just had that set dollar amount. I'm looking at this grant now, had we went the other route and got approved of how much money, if you remember, there was a percentage tie, they didn't charge for the application, but they got a percentage. That's going to allow us more money for the actual capital and double bonus that it's local as well, so it's very exciting. And the only question that I had, it was, Marcus, it talks about a contract, is there an actual contract that we are approving, or like, how do we, do we have to put any specific guidelines in terms of what Mr. Roberts mentioned about, we don't know a cost factor, or we just simply, is it all in part of their proposal that they submitted?
It would be part of, in part of their proposal that they submitted. We also use boilerplate language that Foster Studios provided to us in the past, that we overlay on top of the proposals that we've received, that then the mayor and clerk sign off on after council's approval. Do you have any more comments on the fee?
Yeah, that's typically what we've done, just use that standard services agreement that they had given us a while ago, you know, I just cut and paste different names, and it refers directly back to the proposal.
I'll make a motion that we award the SAW Assessment Management Plan Development Contract to Prine and Newhoff, and according with their proposal that was presented as well to the city of Cadillac.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Under introduction of ordinances and resolutions this evening, we do have a couple. The first one is with respect to the adoption of a resolution that'll introduce an ordinance regarding the vacation of a portion of Russell Street and reserving certain easements. I'm going to ask Jerry Adams to potentially, I think, make his last official presentation as a member of our staff. Who's to say whether he might come back as in a different capacity, making a presentation?
He's done one slide, that's all.
And again, just bear in mind that the action tonight is to set the public hearing.
All right, I don't know if you're familiar with Russell Street or not, but essentially, I probably should have just stayed over here. It's what's called a paper street, that is, it exists on paper, this portion at least, all the way down, and, but has never been developed, and what was recently discovered was that the structure, the house at 311 Russell Street, essentially encroaches about sixteen, sixteen and a half feet into the right-of-way. It has encroached, based on the age of the house, which we can only guess, it's been several decades, so it's been there a long, long time, and so the owner of 311, who owns this parcel, or these several parcels, essentially submitted an application to have all of Russell Street vacated, essentially from this point all the way down to about this point here. Went through the Planning Commission, Planning Commission held a public hearing, and Planning Commission has made a recommendation to City Council to vacate essentially what would be the north one-half of Russell Street along the extent of the applicant's property. By doing so, there would no longer be the encroachment into the public right-of-way, there would also be something of a setback, and there would be room left for snow management purposes, utility purposes, and so forth. Probably unlikely that this roadway is going to be developed, at least not in the near future. If you were to go out there, it drops off markedly, very markedly, a lot of topography there, you can't really tell it by here, and the folks that own the property down here, they have another means of access out onto Whaley, should they ever wanted to develop those parcels. Everything pretty much is vacant along here. So all you're doing tonight is setting a public hearing to consider the vacating, according to the application, it's this entire strip, but with respect to this, this is the portion the Planning Commission is recommending, so I believe you have the language in front of you.
The only thing I was going to add is with respect to the conservation easement language is also being required. That would allow the city to have access to any utilities, as well as access from a public works perspective with vehicles to get in and provide especially some winter maintenance. As it is currently, I think our vehicles are coming in and are already going over some of the private property, will want to click.
Basically, this portion right here, which would not be part of the vacating, depending on what council would approve, yes, basically, it's the boilerplate language that we tend to put in all vacating requests. I did talk to Jim Ray, by the way, our GIS person, who's also a local professional land surveyor, and the city in the past has done a fair number of what we call partial vacatings of right-of-way, so we're not doing anything that's unique with respect to the city itself. Again, what you're doing tonight is setting a public hearing, there would be a fuller presentation at the next meeting.
By Jeff?
Not by you. And the gentleman owns the property is right here, by the way. He's been a trooper, waiting for this to go through the Planning Commission, so.
So you've figured out a way to continue to be able to turn the snowplows around down there?
Yes, we think so.
Okay, can we have a motion? I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance number 2015-09 to amend section 42-203 and 42-206 and 42-445 on chapter 42 of the city code. I'm in the wrong place.
You probably should do this one first.
Oh, my God. Somebody else. Oh, here it is, go ahead, somebody else, go ahead. No, I will. Okay, now, I will introduce ordinance number, make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance number 2015-10, vacating a portion of Russell Street and reserving certain easements in favor of the city of Cadillac. Set a public hearing for June 15th, 2015. There it is.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is, again, it's a resolution introducing an ordinance with respect to fee, charges and fees for water services and hall glaze services, and the setting, the request was set of a public hearing of June 1st, 2015. Jeff, I'm not sure if you wanted to just walk through those fees, or if you wanted me to do that. I know you've got a copy of the current fees.
Yeah, I mean, you can walk through them if you want, I can, if there's any questions afterwards, I can answer them on the...
That's fine, so if you were to simply look in your packet, under section one, it refers to installation fees of the main, whether it's a paved street or an unpaved street, and it lists a variety of fees, four hundred dollars during main installation, eight hundred... $850 if it's an unpaved street, and $1975 if it's a paved street. There's then fees for a meter horn, a meter, the MXU, which is the radio-controlled device, and then the vaulting that start at the greater of $50, our actual cost, greater of $210, our actual cost, greater of $170, our actual cost, and then the greater of $80, our actual cost. There's then provision under service call fees for a turn-on during working hours. The scheduled fee are $15, non-scheduled of $60. And likewise, for a turn-off, the scheduled fee of $30, non-scheduled of $60. And if it's delinquent, a turn-off of $75. There's then hydrant flow testing fees of $400 if it's flow test documentation, and then if it's previous flow test data, only of $100. The action tonight, again, would be looking at setting the public hearing for your next meeting, which is June 1. The only other fee that I apologize, I didn't mention, is the hauling of sludge fee. I believe it's $200?
Yeah, that's actually leachate coming in.
Is that leachate?
Okay. And there is the monthly penalty for late fees of 5%.
5%.
Which is a new fee that we haven't had before. So, if you have a balance, they'll get charged.
And these were fees that City Council has discussed previously, as well as members of the public that.
And if I may, Marcus, as an example, on the meter horn, meter, MXU, those things, if you add them up, it's like $400. Right now, it costs us $400 to put that in a person's house. They paid, according to our current fees, $220. So, it costs us money to put a meter in. So, we're just trying to get the fees up where some of these non-typical jobs, they're covered by the fees, which is what I think originally the fees were meant for, is to cover those non-typical jobs. But it's just been, in the 17 years I've been here, they've never adjusted the meter fees. And those prices have gone up. Same with the paving, same with all the fees here. It's just, they've never gone up in the 17 years I've been here, so. That's it.
Again, the action we're looking for this evening is to set the public hearing to Jim personally.
Well, since I started saying it before.
You did it so well.
I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance number 2015-09 to amend section 42-203, 42-206, and 42-445 of chapter 42 of the city code to increase charges and fees for certain water services and hauled waste services, and set a public hearing for June 1, 2015. Timing is everything.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The next item is under the adoption of ordinances and resolutions section. It's a request to adopt a joint amended resolution that confirms and reestablishes the Statutory Lake Improvement Board for Lake Mitchell pursuant to Public Act 451 of 1994 as amended. Your packet includes a copy of the original second resolution that was put in place in 1989. It also includes a copy of the resolution, of course, that you're being asked to consider adopting this evening. In summary, there has been an agreement in place for over 25 years. You might ask, well, why, you know, why again does Cadillac have a say? And it's because Cadillac actually does have city property that borders part of Lake Mitchell. In fact, Councilmember Spelman does serve as, in an official capacity, as the council liaison to that management board. After the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board reviewed their original resolution, it was determined that it was appropriate at this time, after about 25 years, to look at blowing the dust off of their agreement and amending it and updating the language. It was also determined that the City of Cadillac was not a part of the original agreement that was put in place, or the original resolution that was put in place. And that was done after the fact. But as, if you will, they're doing the sort of do-over, the reset, it was discussed and determined that it would be great if all of the municipalities moved forward with resolutions of support in the adoption of their new plan. So, that's what we're here this evening for council to consider doing. I'm not sure, Councilmember Spelman, if you have anything to add to that. I did speak with our drain commissioner, actually, late this afternoon, who was out on a lake, and apologized for not being able to come in person. But he was also advocating support for this resolution as well.
Yeah, you summed it up pretty well. When the original document was signed, it was just the two surrounding townships. And then later, they realized that the City of Cadillac needed to also sign it. So, that's what you have in front of you that says "copy" at the top. It just kind of included us in there, but it didn't have any of the language about what we were doing. And the attorney for the Lake Mitchell Improvement Board was looking at all of these resolutions for some reason, and he thought it would be in everyone's, in each of the municipality's best interest if we all had our own resolution. So, they're all the same, but we are each passing one.
I was going to ask a question about that. So, there won't be one overall resolution with the signature with all three? We're all going to have our separate?
Right.
Has there been any discussion? When I saw this, I thought it was unique, but like, let's say, 15 years down the road, Selma changed their resolution because they only have authority on theirs, and then it is different from ours. Was there any discussion about that versus usually when it, intergovernmental agreement, they'll all sign the same one, so if there's a change?
I think the Public Act would guide that, because the Public Act is really specific about who the members of it are and what the resolution says.
Okay.
You know, it's all by Public Act 451.
Sounds like you're favorable to having this.
I am. And I'll make that motion to adopt a joint amended resolution confirming and reestablishing a statutory lake improvement board for Lake Mitchell pursuant to Public Act 451 of 1994 as amended.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcon?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is, again, I shouldn't say again. The next item under adoption of ordinances and resolutions is a request to adopt a resolution amending the General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015. Owen, if you would, please go through the list of.
Yep, so, going through page by page here, fortunately shorter than the last one. In the general fund, a couple of things going on here in the city complex in that appropriation center. Looking at some additional repairs and maintenance costs, there's two reasons for that. One is, we've had a couple of mechanical issues that's, it looks like, going to kick that over where it's currently appropriated. It's not yet, but looks like it's going to go over by the end of the year. The second part of that is, unfortunately, our custodian suffered an injury, though I've pleaded with him to stop playing basketball because we're getting so old. He unfortunately hurt himself and is out, has been out for, I don't know, a month or so.
Heard that Art pushed him.
Yeah. And so, we've had to incur some contractual services to make sure that the complex stays clean and all of that stuff. So, the capital outlay portion, we talked at the last council meeting about getting some hearing assistance in the room here. And so, we do have a quote on that, and that'll provide some devices that will blend well into our system here. So, this would also ensure that we have an appropriation to move forward with that. I'm told that we can get that in before July 1. Hopefully, that will come to fruition. I know we have some members of some other boards that are really wanting us to get that in. So, we're going to work real hard to get that in as quick as we can. The next two things are what we talked about earlier tonight. The first one being the Heritage Park Place Plans Project Fund. That's a brand-new fund. It was going to be brand-new as of July 1, but with the award tonight, we can get moving on that right away. So, we want to at least pull some of those funds into the current year. Not sure how much work they'll be able to do in the next six weeks. But right now, there's no budget for that, for those activities at all. So, we need to get some in there. So, we're just going to project about $20,000 and see where they come in at for the year.
I think it's important to note where those funds are coming from.
Well, part of it's coming from the grant, part of it's coming from, you know, for the current fund, the current year, we're asking for some of those to come from the Capital Projects Fund, our local development fund, where we've typically helped fund projects like this. The DDA is going to help provide some funds, and then the, what's the source of the federal grant on that one, or the state grant? MEDC?
MEDC, Core Communities Fund.
Yep. So, that's where eventually those funds will come from.
Yeah, I was just referring to, it's being transferred in from the Cadillac Development.
Yes, okay, okay.
Not from our cash?
Not from reserves, yes, yes, in the general fund, for sure. So, that's what that one is. And those funds, again, the contractual services will go to Pryne and Newhoff, who we awarded that to. The next, top of page two of the appendix, the exhibit of the amendment, is appropriating the funds to transfer out of the Cadillac Development Fund to make those, to provide funds for those services. The next fund is also a new one. Kind of went back and forth on how to account for all of the activities related to the Saw Grant, and talked to our auditors, and actually talked to the finance director from Traverse City, who I've talked to on several occasions, but they also got a $2 million Saw Grant. And he said they really wrestled with it for a while. Theirs is already going, and they actually set up a completely separate fund for all of the activities on that. You know, a portion of these are related to the wastewater, which could be accounted for in the Water and Sewer Fund, but it makes kind of year-to-year comparability a little bit difficult if you have a, you know, million-and-a-half-dollar spike in your expenses for a year. So, what they've done, and he said it's worked out pretty well for them as far as being able to keep a detail of the activities specifically related to the Saw Grant, is set up a new special revenue fund just for Saw Grant-related activities. So, that's what I'm proposing. Our auditors are comfortable with that. So, for this year to get going, we're looking at, again, this is an estimate. As we talked to Pryne and Newhoff, they wanted to kick this thing off just as quick as possible. We're going to be on a really tight timeline for everything that needs to be done by September of 2017. So, we're going to project $50,000. If it's above or below that, it doesn't really matter. It's 100% grant, and we'll be able to match that with grant revenue by the year. So, just wanted to have sufficient, we're going to hit the ground running, you know, really fast on this thing. So, wanted to put a level of appropriation in there that we'll cover so that we don't have to worry about, you know, well, should we wait a couple of weeks on this or not? We just want to go with it. So, I wanted to point out on that as well, and, you know, with what took place tonight, and a little bit of a delay on the budget adoption, this fund is not in there for the 16. So, the plan was, in July, to amend that into the budget. May do either that or just present a new appropriations ordinance next time for you to consider that would include that. So, again, on operations, it doesn't really impact anything. These are fairly easy for council to amend in there. So, we'll be back to you, is what I'm saying essentially, on the appropriations for the Saw Grant. But this should get us, and we did ask Pryne and Newhoff after we made that determination that we were going to recommend them, what did they think would be sufficient? And they told us they probably wouldn't incur more than $35,000, so that's what the contractual services are for. And the others are for, you know, a lot of internal staff time is reimbursable as well. So, we'll begin allocating that over there. Lastly, in the Water and Sewer Fund, it was just, you know, again, related to legal fees. This is the one that was carved out for the last, on the last one. Again, understand that there's some policy things that we want to talk about. Most of these have already been incurred at this point. The fund as a whole, which is how we appropriate for the Water and Sewer Fund, is not over budget, but it's, this will take care of this line item as we start to project where the total fund will end up the year. Last time, we were asking for 30, and since that time, a couple of things have happened. It is looking like, and I know you've talked about it later, and it was mentioned earlier, the legal fees from the Borsma case. It looks like we'll have a judgment to have to reimburse some of those. And when this amendment was prepared, that number, as I heard, it was $14,000. Now, it looks like it's going to be more in the area of $45,000. So, need to request, actually, instead of 50 for this to be amended, up about 30, unfortunately. So, and that's going to be a court judgment. So, that's not, it's not anything that we can avoid. To address the question about utilizing the Water and Sewer Fund, have received some guidance that that's okay in this case. The project essentially that was challenged was the installation of a water and sewer asset. For us, this has been in our CIP as a water and sewer project for a long time. Those were the funds utilized to do the project. So, have received some guidance that this is an appropriate classification for these funds at this time. So, that's it. So, again, on the Water and Sewer, not 50, but 80, actually, if that could be the request. And that information was confirmed at literally, you know, 10 to 6 tonight, to me, so.
Owen, you did say that it's court-ordered, obviously.
That will be court-ordered, yeah. And I know that there's a schedule, May 26, I think. Is that when the next thing in that is?
That's right.
Even if the, it's not finalized by then, just with accounting principles, we are aware of it. It's highly probable that we'll get this. It's pretty reasonably estimable, and so, we will have to record this expense in the fund just based on accounting principles for the year. So, it will go into this year for sure, even if that final judgment hasn't been issued.
Okay, will there be a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution amending General Appropriations Act for fiscal year 2015 as presented.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spelman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Stevens?
Yes.
Melama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Motion, please. Okay, we then have a long list of minutes from our different boards and commissions that we can review, and at this time, we'll open the floor for public comments.
Julie Theobald, first thing I have to tell you, I am here as a resident of the city of Cadillac. 926 Sundberg Street is my address, and I would like to see a neighborhood watch program put together. We've tried contacting the city police department, left messages for the, I guess you would call them the liaison for programs like that, and we can't seem to get a response from him. We don't know what else to do, so here we are, looking for any kind of direction on how to get this neighborhood program up and going. If I need to help write grants, I'll be there to do it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Name's John Harris. I live at 827 Cody Street. I'm in great favor of this neighborhood watch program. I think it's something that we really need at this point of time. Our police department, numbers are down. We could help. A lot of our citizens do not want to get involved. They close their eyes to certain things. We need people that will go out, not vigilantes, and help the police. We want to work with them, and them work with us. We want to have it, a team to do this, but we want them to give us the information on how to put it together, and I have tried since first of the year, and I can't get them to respond back to me. I was down there last Thursday and give them another note, and she said, "I will make sure that he responds back to you this time." I haven't heard a word. So, here I am. I don't know what else to do. I've contacted nine and 10 news, thinking maybe I could get them to put pressure on them to respond. They wouldn't respond back to me. I guess they're just trying to blow us off. That's, I don't want to believe that, but that's how I'm feeling. And as a citizen here, taxpayer, I want a better community for my grandchildren, my neighbors, everybody in home. If we could stop and help an elderly person, that's just a plus. So, thank you for my, for your time.
Thank you, John.
I stay here, and I heard a lot of things tonight. First of all, Jerry, I want to thank you for all you've done for the city. You were wonderful to work with when we had the Vietnam Wall here, and Bruce, and you're going to be sadly missed, for sure. You know, there were some things, I remember being here at a meeting in November, and Mr. Golick was here, and they were trying to appropriate for more radios, needed to upgrade their system, $118,000. Two months later, I talked to them about trying to do some benefits to help raise that money. He goes, "No, need to, it's already covered. We're shortening our police force by doing, you know, things like that, just don't make sense to me." I hear them talk about frivolous lawsuits. Well, I thought that we had an accommodation of an amount of money that we went to. You know, who gives the right to let, you know, this run up to $24,000? But yet, no mention has been made about the Mert decision, where the city actually won a case, you haven't pursued Mr. Golick for any money, when he contested that, you know, you gave him a layoff, and, you know, there's just a lot of, a lot of good old boy, good old girl payback stuff here. It's got to quit. This city's got to get on a level base and let us all start working together, try to make things happy again. I mean, I bump my heads, I come in here and bump heads with you, but I still go out and do many city service things, and I love to do that kind of stuff. And, you know, it just really hurts when I'm just going to throw out the American Legion, or even if I'm at the park, and people come up and they go, "Man, what is going on?" And, you know, you try not to be too detrimental, but sometimes you just have to be to get your point across that, hey, we need everybody to get involved and become part of our city, and let's make it active, and let's make it a happy place. Sad. Thanks.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and move to the good of the order for this evening. Councilmember Melama.
I love being first all the time, but I will go. First of all, I want to thank the Career Tech Center and the Manufacturers Association. We had a wonderful career expo. It was very, very successful. We had over 30 employers there. We had roughly about 13 manufacturers. Some of the manufacturers got some summer employment, and students got a job, seniors. So, it was very, very successful. It was the third time we've done it, and we're very, very pleased. And, of course, we are not having any more manufacturers meetings. During the summer, we take the summer off. On my issues and solutions over coffee, we had several people there. We ran into a little bit of a traffic problem. People had difficulty getting there. The issues of rent came up. The issue of my voting on the budget came up by resident, and what other issues? Oh, concerns, Cadillac West, what was going to be done, what MDOT, and Mike Coy answered that very, very well. That went very well. My last statement is this: I generally do not get into name-calling. In fact, I find that very unprofessional. But this time, I am going to get into name-calling, but it's going to be on a positive note. It's my friend, person who I enjoyed working with, is Jerry Adams. I'm making him very uncomfortable right now. If there's one thing I learned about Jerry at a meeting, you give him a compliment, and he starts moving around because he just feels uncomfortable about that. But what I enjoyed about Jerry is his honesty, you always got an honest answer, and his transparency. He always gave you the facts and the information so you could make a decision. This is a tough seat to be in. There's times when, you know, you make a decision, and you realize you don't have all that information, and that is very, very uncomfortable. But dealing with Mr. Adams, with the Manufacturers Association, and in other areas, he is very, very professional, and I'm going to really miss him. The only thing I wish he would do now, he stopped doing it now that he's retired, is he doesn't wave to me anymore when he goes down the street, but he promised me he would do that from now on. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spelman?
Yeah, I will echo that. We're going to miss Jerry very much. He's done a lot for this community. It's one of the amazing things about serving in a community of this size, is that we've had an excellent community development director, and he will be missed, but I know he's got someone good who's going to be filling in for him, but Jerry will never be able to be replaced, sorry. And we really wish you a happy retirement. And, yeah, the only other thing I have is, and I don't want to take anything for granted, but I hope we can be assured that the city manager will direct someone to contact the folks who spoke up today during public comment related to some guidelines on how to develop a neighborhood watch program, if they are really interested in doing that. Thank you.
Councilmember Shippers?
It's Jerry Adams Love Fest tonight. My first volunteer position at the city was with the Planning Commission, and at that point is when I really got to know who Jerry was and his vision for the city and his dedication. And that's something that transferred to me, and I feel like I learned that from you, so I thank you very much for that. Sometimes I run down the hill with my eyes closed, but mostly, I'm trying to keep my eyes on the prize, and that's because of you. So, thank you so much for that, Jerry. I bet you're really glad this is your last night.
Good time.
On another note, the youth council, the mayor's youth council will be meeting on Wednesday at 4:00 PM, right here in these chambers. Please feel free to come join us, and watch how it's done. That's all.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you. Quick note, I know we were talking about it earlier, but we, you know, a lot of this, the more I think about it, is that a lot of these pressures, and that was the week that I covered for issues over coffee, the issue was brought up about the different voting on the council, and it's not always together, and I think a lot of times, that blame gets put on the council completely. But we only have a certain role. A lot of this is in the community, and there are groups, and of all sides, these groups are, they are politically driven. And as we can see, we've all seen it, they could come up one time and complain about one issue, and then when we do the other side, they come back. But this is something that we don't have a lot of control over, the other groups, other than us leading in a way that exemplifies leadership and not getting into that. And I know that some are probably not completely intent on listening on it, but I think one of the things, I go back and I read, and I wasn't part of that when we did the core values and guiding behaviors, but I think that's where we can set the example, and we have to all do that together and believe that with each other in order for us to expect other people to. And I think that sometimes, these issues like this, tonight, we might have a debate on a philosophy, but we got to be able to put that aside and then move on. I think that's what our community is looking for, is leadership. And I hope that people are listening. They need to be leaders inside these other groups, too, that need to come forward and hold their own groups accountable, and hold, you know, of us looking at the positive, because there's an awful lot of positive things, which I want to shift to right now. First, a couple of quick thank-yous, Owen, and then the staff. Last week, excuse me, our last meeting a month ago, I had asked about some handicap-accessible things. Thank you immediately for working on the hearing aspect for the meetings. Thank you to the staff. I've been in the office. I see the quick solution is keeping that front door open. I think that's awesome. I've been here multiple times. Tonight, I got to firsthand see a gentleman that would have had a hard time executing that, but we had the door open, so thanks right away for doing that. The firemen, quick note, well, first of all, the parks. Thank you for all those volunteers, came out and helped in the parks and showing a team effort of doing that. Kind of overlapping with that time, the firemen had a nice fundraiser with the Detroit Lions, actually, in town, and I want to say thank you to the firemen for the fact that this is not a fundraiser for them. This is simply a fundraiser for them to collect funds to give back to the community. And the newspaper did an excellent thank you on that event, and kind of promoting, and so the radio stations are promoting. These are the groups that the Firemen Association gives, too, so thank you as well. And then the last echo, save the best for last. Mr. Adams, believe it or not, I had the opportunity, before he was an employee with the city, he was a consultant for the historic district, and I happened to be on that committee that put that together, and got to watch this, this really cool guy operate and help guide us. And I remember joking with him, "Boy, it'd be nice to have you working in Cadillac." And then shortly after that, Mr. Adams was here working. Over 20 boards. I don't think we realized his involvement in the community. 20 boards that are active, and I'm probably lowballing, so sorry, but he has been involved with over 20 boards. The amount of volunteers he's had an impact with, the amount of people that he's been with, and the responses back, we've always been positive about him. You, as Councilmember Melama said, and the others, you exemplified a level of government, of transparency, in showing both sides. Every time we had an issue, you would show both sides of it and give that information, and it was very well-respected. So, it's nice to celebrate for you. It's, you're going to be missed by us, the community, and the people that can't tell you that directly, thank you for everything you've done. That's it.
Okay. Marcus?
Thank you, mayor members of the city council. Please save the date, June 25th, 5:30, I believe it's 5:30 to 7:30. There will be public information coming out about this. I've been working with a group of stakeholders and developing a downtown opportunity walk. This would be an opportunity for folks to come and potentially get access to available spaces within our core downtown area. We're hoping to attract local entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs that are also not local, developers, realtors, and basically anybody that may have a sincere interest in looking at some available space and maybe making something with it. The details are still coming together. As a part of this event, there will also be some spaces that have been rather recently adaptively redeveloped, so that folks can kind of see, you know, how you can take, you know, if you will, an empty space or a canvas, and then turn it into something rather unique and new. This will certainly be open to the public, and again, the date is June 25th. Keep an eye out for additional public information as it comes out. The only other thing I was going to mention this evening, again, publicly, is certainly my gratitude to Jerry Adams, is we had this morning for staff, excuse me, before we opened the doors to the public, began by explaining to Jerry and those present, how, and thinking about my time and working with Jerry, and thinking about all of the debates we've had, and the good times we've had, I was thinking to myself, "Oh, my God, the guy's not dying. He hasn't died yet, you know? Not memorializing him, we're thanking him." And that got a little bit of a chuckle out of Jerry there, and, but in all seriousness, you know, Jerry, as I think everybody here knows, is the kind of person where if you come to him, you need help, always willing to listen to you, always willing to provide some guidance, willing to go that extra mile. willing to provide some guidance, willing to go that extra mile, and essentially exceeding, you know, expectations, even when it comes sometimes to the most simplest things. Jerry was able to put his spin on it, and really, I think, made Cadillac, helped to contribute to make Cadillac the very special place that Cadillac is. And so Jerry, I really cannot thank you enough for your years of service to this organization and this community. I know you're not necessarily flying the coop, and certainly looking forward to seeing you in the public. So, thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay. The only thing that I have this evening is that I want to thank Jerry also. When we think about our core values of respect, integrity, trust, and excellence, you can think of Jerry. And I've heard it, I've heard these terms as everyone else has talked. But then if you look at our guiding behaviors of we support each other in serving our community, we communicate openly, honestly, respectfully indirectly, we are fully present, we are all accountable, we trust and assume goodness and intentions, and we are continuous learners. There aren't too many people that I know, Jerry, that could fall into all of these categories naturally, but you do it. And I want to tell you how I have appreciated and have been honored to serve with you for the last year and a half. And you're a gentleman, but you're also a gentle man. And I have appreciated watching you mentor people, even when they didn't realize it. So, congratulations on your retirement.
Does he have a list of the open's on committees?
Yeah, we should get that to him.
Give him a week.
We should get that to him.
This is, "Your present from the council is a list of open boards and commission seats."
Give me some time.
Let me breathe. Okay, so we need to have a motion to go into closed session.
There's no changes. As presented, I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss pending civil litigation in the cases of City of Cadillac versus Michelle Lake Corp., Wexford County Circuit Court Case Number 14-25602-CH, and Charter Township of Herring versus City of Cadillac and Donald Boersma and Gloria Boersma, Wexford County Circuit Court Case Number 13-24606-CH, the discussion of which in public would have a detrimental financial effect on the city's trial or settlement strategy. I would also, we would also like to invite Jerry Adams and John Wallace, the community development directors, in to the closed session. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to return to open session.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, mayor members of the city council. At this time, it would be appropriate to consider a motion to accept the city attorney's recommendation as discussed regarding the Boersma matter.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Falcone?
Yes.
With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.